Meeting is called over to Mr. Steve Downs. We'll leave and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Joyce will need a roll call to determine if we've got a form.
Alder Person Hoppin-John?
Here.
Teble?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Downs?
Here.
Cairns?
Here.
All right, you've got a quorum.
Excellent. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Once the council's had a moment to review, entertain a motion to approve council minutes for November 7, 23.
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion for Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. McCarthy, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Next is approval of agenda. The informational presentation on the 22 city audit will be removed from tonight's agenda. Auditor Bill Mooney was unable to join us tonight. Are there any other needed changes? If not, entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion from Ms. Teble, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Walters, any discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, agenda is approved. Okay, next on the agenda, informational presentation, NSA engineering, Highway 14 traffic study. I believe we have them with us virtually, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, who do we have? Do we have Andy Zimmer, or is there something?
We have with us tonight both Andy Zimmer and Eric Friling. Eric Friling is the lead traffic engineer that has been doing the vast majority of work on this study. So he's going to present tonight, and we do have Andy Zimmer here as well. This is going to be a very short presentation, five slides, just to try to inform the council of what the results of that study were. It will be looked at much more in depth at the next plan commission meeting, which is January 10th. I expect we'd probably spend a half an hour, 45 minutes or so, reviewing how they came to the conclusions they did, but we wanted the council to be aware, generally speaking, of the results of the study. So Eric, are you able, Eric, he's shared his screen already, take it away, Eric.
Sounds good, thank you, Jason. Yeah, so as Jason introduced, we're working with the city on this portion of US Highway 14. The draft report was submitted last week and is currently under review. I'm just going to give some high-level overview notes from some of the results from this study. So, study area corridor was approximately 1.1 miles, focusing on the area between Starlight Lane and Jellon Drive. Traffic counts were collected during peak hours during weekday and also on Saturday peak hour at the intersections of Starlight Lane, County O, Pleasant Valley Drive, and Jellon Drive, to help build some of the background traffic analysis for the project. As part of some of the other areas of interest that the city expressed interest in was the Richland Square property, integrations with the Pine River Trail, of course, the new hospital site down on the south side of the Jellon Drive intersection, and then looking at some potential future mixed use and residential development on either side of the 14 corridor. Having some of the safety aspects of the project, we looked at five years of the last available reported crash. That's the industry standard for a safety review. As part of that review, we found approximately 42 crashes along that stretch of the corridor. Majority of them were focused at the four intersections that we were most interested in, with the highest number at County O with 11 crashes, nine crashes at Starlight Lane, nine crashes at Pleasant Valley Drive, and one crash at Jellon Drive. The vast majority of these crashes were property damage only or very minor injuries. Entabulating the data, it was found that both from a corridor perspective and also from an intersection level perspective, all the records that were found were lower than what statewide averages would suggest for a similar type of corridor. There were no reported crashes involving pedestrians or bicyclists, and this includes the crossings with the Pine River Trail and the public roadways. Some of the crash patterns that were noticed at County O are expected to be addressed by the proposed upgrades that Wisconsin Department of Transportation is planning in 2026 for the County O intersection as well. Looking at the traffic, we looked at four different scenario levels, one that's just looking at how things are operating today. We looked at what would happen if there's just background corridor, basically background traffic growth along the 14 corridor, but no other development. We looked at what would be expected with the new hospital going in, and then also what would things potentially look like with more substantial growth along the corridor. And in the situations with the background, the no bill, and with the new hospital, the models are suggesting that there should be adequate capacity with the way the corridor is currently configured. However, if there is substantial growth in the area, depending upon the exact configuration of the development, the type of development, intersection improvements will likely be needed. And at this level, you can't really predict what intersection per se, at what time, until we know what type of development is actually going in. With that, we work with our planning folks to kind of try and forecast what type of developments would be fitting for the area. What this has ended up causing is some inadequate capacity when you have the side roads entering in to Highway 14. Highway 14 generally has enough capacity, it's where you have the additional traffic meeting the 14 corridor that causes additional delays, as well as the way the current traffic signal operates at the County O intersection would have to be adjusted as well. Any future improvements, since this portion of the corridor is currently controlled by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, additional coordination would have to be undertaken with them, and as part of that, formal intersection control evaluations would be completed at the time of proposed development to see what would be the best intersection control adjustment, whether it be a traffic signal or roundabout. Traffic signals would be potential for a solution if traffic signal warrants are met. So he also asked us to look at some potential ideas for frontage and backage road connections within the study corridor area. This would help assist with the access consolidation goals to improve safety along the corridor, basically by moving the lower speed traffic that is turning in and out of these developments onto a lower speed facility, since the stretch of Highway 14 is currently close to 40 miles an hour. Final locations will be dependent again on what development actually occurs. However, as part of the hospital development, they are currently preparing the site for frontage road configuration, and based on the initial results, we are in full support that, that it can help build that additional connectivity, as well as consolidate some of the access points in that direct area. One of the final points that was also looked at was the Pine River Trail, especially the crossing at Foundry. That one, we took an even deeper dive on the safety side of things, looked back 10 years. There were no reported incidents with motor vehicles at that crossing. Preliminary findings is we recommend upgrading signage and markings just to highlight those crossings a little bit better, and then potentially expand any connectivity to the local businesses to help with not only tourism, but also multimodal connectivity. Additionally, with any developments on either side of Highway 14, there would have to be some type of north-south connector between that trail, and then that would be tied in with any intersection improvements with 14. Excuse me, with 14. So with that, like I said, this was meant to be a really high-level overview. The city is currently reviewing the document, and we will go into much more extensive detail at the next plan commission meeting, as Jason mentioned. If there are any kind of high-level questions, I can entertain those at this time, otherwise we will look forward to meeting with you all at the next plan commission meeting.
I read any questions or comments. Thank you, sir, for the presentation.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, have a good night, guys. All right, next on our agenda, the city audit would be city and utility department head reports and concerns. Let's start with our librarian. Who's got the mic?
Just a quick update from the library. We were in the process of filling both a part-time and full-time position, and we got filled the part-time position since I last reported, still working on the full-time and the interview process right now for our programming coordinator, and very much looking forward to filling that hopefully soon. We'll be closed tomorrow, Thursday, or rather, day after tomorrow, Thursday, for staff in-service workday, so don't stop at the library that day. And then just our meeting time, our board meeting time has changed from 4:30 to 5:00 PM on the third Monday of the month, so anyone that may be interested in attending, we hope that that meeting time is more accessible for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go next to Police Chief Billy Jones.
Not much to report, but I can report that we are in, completed our first week of Sarah Mulberry, being assigned or being hired as our new administrative secretary. So things are going well. We got a little bit of backlog, but she's catching on quickly, and I think, so far, so good.
Excellent. Thank you, Billy. Mr. Jason Glassbrenner.
I think I'm going to pass tonight, or do you want me to share?
I would just say that if the full council's interested, I'm now reporting to Finance, which is my home committee. We hadn't been doing that before, so there is a summary under the Finance packet on the website of the primary projects for the period, so rather than dragging it out, if you want to go to that page and check it out, you can.
Thanks. Mr. Aaron Joyce, when you're done typing.
Just to follow up last, from last month, the opportunity for folks to take out nomination papers for a run at a city office is open now. Papers need to be returned by January 2nd at the end of the day, so if anybody wants to run for city office, come see me.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Wendy.
Work is ongoing in reviewing and refining policies and procedures in addition to my day-to-day duties, so Sarah did get me everything I needed for court this morning, as you saw, so she's doing what she needs to do on my end. I am looking to put together some educational materials for the council, some of the discussion issues tied to various policies that I might be proposing, just trying to put that into a form which may be helpful in guiding and encouraging discussions. I should have an example of that coming up here shortly. Other than that, I will also forego agenda item number 10. All the same principles I expressed there apply, and I'm just waiting for opportunities to provide additional education for my end.
Thank you, Michael. Ashley, do you have anything tonight?
Yes. So first and foremost, you have all been invited to the employee holiday party. It is a Griswold family Christmas theme, and we would love it if you're able to attend. That's going to be on December 14th from 4 to 6 PM at the Senior Center, which means that on the 14th, the, this building, the municipal building, will be closing slightly early at 4:00 PM rather than 4:30, so all employees have the opportunity to attend, and there might be an impact perhaps to library as well, their hours. So please, if you're able, attend, we will have a taco bar. You're gonna love it, and we would enjoy having you there as well. And then lastly, I did hand you tonight some paperwork. This is in preparation for the meeting on Thursday, so this Thursday at 6:30, there's a budget hearing in your packet, these will be included. In the hard copy you have now, it'll be included in your packet for that meeting, which will be available online, but I'd like to point out, the first page of what you've seen shows you, based on the figures that have been included in the budget, what the impact will be for your taxes, so you can see an example of that there, and then also on that same sheet, it'll go by department, how much of that is from each of those departments. And so the handout that you have been given, Finance, it looks somewhat familiar to what you were reviewing during the budget process, but this is looking at the revenue and the expenses associated with each department or function, so there are, you know, the airport is one, but then there's miscellaneous revenues or miscellaneous expenses, so they're grouped together, so that way we can drill down and see, you know, what levy dollars are going towards what. So hopefully that will be an improvement to what you've reviewed in the past, and I would welcome any feedback or suggestions you may have after reviewing this, but like I said, I will be including this and more in the packet for Thursday.
Thank you, and I don't see any other department heads here tonight. Thank you very much, Ashley. That will move us to Mayor and Alder Person's committee, commission, board reports, and comments or items to be discussed at a future meeting. I'm going to start on my left tonight, Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Steve Downs. Mr. Kevin Melby. Melanie Walters.
Just wanted to give an update from the Personnel Committee. So we have now fully hired for our street department, so we have four full-time employees, Tom Shower, Jason Coe, Jerry Nix, and Scott Harwick. Why I'm pointing this out is because Tom is the only one who has been with the street department for over six months. The other three have been hired fairly recently, so I guess I'd just like to put it out to the public to, snow season is upon us, have a little grace when you're dealing with our street department. They are learning their routes as quickly as they can, learning how to navigate the equipment, so there's a little learning curve for them. They're going to do their best until they get in a good routine of working with each other. Besides that, we still have openings for a zoning administrator and a director of Public Works. And that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin Chambers.
Nothing, Mike.
Tom McCarthy.
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Karen Teble, sorry.
Is it that, is it happening here?
Yeah.
Just real quick, I'd like to thank our library director for coming to our meetings and giving the report from the library. Saves a little of my mic time, thank you, but no, it's much appreciated. It'd be nice if some of the other department heads would also share with us at our meetings. So the only other one that I have is tourism, and at the meeting, I'm just going to sit way back here, feedback. At our meeting, we did approve for a new travel guide to be printed this year. Last one we had was from like two years ago, so it'll be ready to go for the spring and with the all-new additions, just some simple things, as we elected a vice-chairperson for committee, and also Marty presented quite a large report on just kind of where our website, where some of the streaming video and all of those numbers that are coming in, and they all look really great, so that's what I have for tourism.
Thank you, Connie Hoppin-John.
Nothing tonight.
And my comment isn't necessarily city business, other than just wanted to point out, the reviews of the rotary lights in Park are over the top again this year. If you haven't been, I encourage you to go to that. Okay, moving on, we have the treasurer's report, Mr. Aaron Joyce.
Okay, this is the treasurer's report for the period, end date November 30th, 2023. City general had an ending balance of $310,038. State pool number one had an ending balance of $5,032,975. We did get a state revenue sharing deposit in November, so of $1.2 million. State pool number two, Lanta Long-Term Care, ending balance of $310,930. Moving down to the RLF Business Savings, that had an ending balance of $588,561. Also, library checking had an ending balance of $228,836. Looking at the room tax, that had an ending balance of $36,365. Also, Greater Richland Tourism, that had an ending balance of $55,601. Moving down also to the Renew RC, the Affordable Housing Fund, had an ending balance of $1,028,267. And finally, state pool number four, our committed projects account, that had an ending balance of $1,658,45. Any questions?
Questions or comments from Mr. Joyce?
I do have one question. For the Greater Richland Tourism line, under receipts of the $29,166, is that room tax just from Richland Center, given that they're the Greater Richland?
No. Greater Richland Tourism includes 70% of the room tax funds that are collected in the quarter in addition to the contribution from the participating townships.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion to approve tonight's treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
Motion from Ms. Teble, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs, discussion of the treasurer's report. Hearing none, Mr. Joyce will need a roll call vote, please.
Alder Person, Teble? Hi. McCarthy?
Hi.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin-John?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, payment of bills. While the council reviews those bills, it is my duty to read the following. The bills presented on this day, excluding any library fund invoices, has been referred to them. Having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and said committee have duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions. None are listed, it is signed by the members of the Finance Committee. Undertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion for Mr. Downs, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Melby, any discussion of the bills? Hearing none, Aaron will need a roll call.
Alder Person, McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin-John?
Aye.
Teble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, items for discussion in match 95, appointment of the city clerk on your nominating position of city clerk for an indefinite term, Mr. Aaron Joyce. At this point, on a nomination, I guess we just need a roll call vote to confirm unless there's discussion from amongst the council. We need to do a motion to confirm, or can we just do the roll call vote? That's what I thought. Mr. Joyce will do a roll call.
There's no motion. A motion to appoint you.
You want that? That's what I was saying.
Yes, that would be.
Okay, okay, and we need a motion to appoint Mr. Joyce as city clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Which one of you was that? Ms. Hoppin-John, thank you very much. Okay, discussion?
You said this was indefinite?
Yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Okay, hearing no discussion, now we'll have to roll call.
Alder Person, Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin-John?
Aye.
Teble?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all.
Okay, six, appointment of acting city treasurer, again, we must have, and Mr. Joyce, I'm going to ask you for a comment in a second, we must have an acting treasurer, we will be appointing the permanent treasurer as soon as one is found, but to do property tax collection, which is imminent, we have to have a treasurer, is that correct, Mr. Joyce?
That's correct.
Until just now, when city clerk and city treasurer were created, what were positions? That was one position, city clerk treasurer, and Mr. Joyce has been filling in that role, correct, Mr. Joyce?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, tonight of nominating Mr. Joyce, Aaron Joyce to be appointed acting treasurer until a permanent replacement is found, is there a motion?
How many is that motion?
Motion for Ms. Teble, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Chambers, is there discussion?
Do we have a, do we currently have an application open for this?
Right, we're advertising, of course, it's an appointed position, but yes, there is advertising going on for it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, we'll need a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
Alder Person, Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin-John?
Aye.
Teble?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is status of the north-south portion of East Fifth Street Parcel 276-1635-8500 and its potential use for public travel. Mr. Wendy, did you want to discuss this?
So I, as you recall, last time I asked for an adjournment so that I could research the potential impact of opening the parcel as a street and opening it for public travel. Frankly, I found more questions than answers. Every time I thought I had an idea of what the potential impacts could be, something new came up. An example would be, well, I thought I figured out the width of the road that would be required, but then due to the situation, there's a concern that there may need to be the installation of a cul-de-sac so that emergency vehicles could do their turnaround. It is very likely that we would need some input from an engineer to determine the potential impact, both on the proposed projects for it and then just overall, what the city would need to install to make the street viable. At this time, I cannot recommend that the council take this action, but of course defer to your authority to do so.
Okay, so at the last council meeting, we had Todd Fisher here from City Utilities, and we discussed the need to have some utility worked on up in the Forestry area. I don't, I have not heard anybody object to the fact of ever having it paved in the future, but it didn't seem to make sense to get it paved before, you're just going to tear it up to put pipes underground. My goal here is to get to that point. I know the neighbors back there would like to build a new garage, I believe is still the case, and obviously, whatever we do, we don't want to disrupt the existing structures that belong to the neighbors that are there now. Have you looked at, or do you know if it would be possible to either make this, if it can't be a street, if there's a reason we found it from an engineer that says, "Don't do that," could we designate it an alleyway and have the city maintain it, or could we make it a private drive in ownership of the folks that own the house back there and have it paved?
The alley is lumped in with the questions more than answers still, so I cannot say that positively one way or another. As far as making it a private drive, that would simply require a receptive property owner. Once it's a private drive, as long as it complies with the zoning ordinance, then they can, private, they can do whatever they want with it.
Okay, so to address that concern, the specific point of having it paved once the utility work is done there, it may be possible to do that if it were a private drive?
Yes.
At that point, and we would want to talk to the applicable landlord for a transfer of ownership and then get it paved, so that may be a possibility, but as stated at the last meeting, it doesn't make a lot of sense to pay to pave it and then rip it up and pave it over. it doesn't make a lot of sense to pay to pave it and then rip it up and pave it over. Chuck, is your key concern paved back there, or is there more on your mind than that? Can we get Chuck the microphone?
Well, first, I'd like to thank our neighbors for signing the petition that brought it under state statute so that you could bring it to a vote tonight. We've discussed a great deal about the history of that over twenty-five years since the home was moved back there. I have a little longer history, about forty years, owning a garage back there. And I'm not sure, when you refer to a cul-de-sac, I think initial discussions came up that, you know, that might require some state involvement, and they might require a cul-de-sac. And realistically, all the property is owned by private individuals. I'm not sure that a cul-de-sac is even a possibility back there. We're talking about a stretch of city-owned property that by deed to the city is thirty feet wide by approximately a hundred and thirty feet long. I'm not sure that any fire truck or emergency vehicle would have a difficulty backing up a hundred and thirty feet or less in that driveway. I don't know what more we can bring to that point. The drive that goes back there right now ends with curb and gutter on both sides at the end of what you consider Fifth Street. And the roadway is far less than the thirty-foot width that the city owns. If they simply paved a straight path, you know, twenty-four feet wide, leaving equal distance on both sides of that twenty-four feet, it would probably be equal to or wider than the road that is there, the other road right now. I don't know what more we can say, as, you know, residents, we all try to keep our properties looking pretty decent back there. And it seems that, you know, the ten people that signed the petition are all property owners on that East Fifth Street section. And they feel that it would be an improvement to pave that section. I think you'll find many places in Richland Center that have similar circumstances that are even narrower in street width, and they don't have any cul-de-sack with much longer distance of pavement. So, it's hard for me to understand all of the reasons that you're coming up with to block this. We realize now you're probably not going to pave it immediately. You had the opportunity to do that. We discussed a little bit about the underground plating, and being a resident there so long, I can tell you, and your city crew marked the pillbox that they put in in 2012 when they replaced a brand-new culvert from the north, from the south end to the north end of the section we're talking about. And culverts last a long time. I mean, culverts can last easily fifty years, I'm told, underground. And if they're paved over, possibly even longer than that. So, I struggle with all of your concerns that you brought up.
Thanks, Chuck. Would you like to speak? Okay. Okay, if we could get the mic back. Great, so, Mr. Wendell, at this point, we need, you believe it would be best that an engineer look at that before we took action on that?
I would reiterate the logistical concern of paving it now, it's going to get torn up. Legally, yes, I would say that there needs to be some kind of input from someone who can professionally evaluate and determine whether or not there are any impediments or any violations of zoning ordinance which would be created by the installation and designation of it as a street. I do not recommend pursuing that question until such time as the work that is being proposed is done.
Okay, so, what I would like to do, as we discussed, there's going to be utility work up there. It's going to be, it doesn't make sense to pay to rip it up. What I would like to do is informally talk to some of the neighbors up there about a plan going forward, and whether, because whether it's a street or not makes no difference to me, whether it's paid for you guys to have what you want does matter to me. Just come up with a plan for that, that we can bring back. And Ashley, one is, one of the utility department heads meeting again to discuss timeframes for the Forest Street project?
If you give me a moment, I'll look up.
It's a, sure.
And Mr. Mayor, just as an aside, if the question is simply whether or not we can pave it, that simplifies things as well.
True, okay, I'm sure we could do that, but then, again, that's what I'm trying to get, when do we think they're gonna be done ripping that up so that somebody doesn't pay to do that twice? And then, the best course is it paved as a street, paved as an alley, paved as a private drive. It doesn't make a lot of difference to me, as long as it doesn't cause a problem. And that these guys could do what they want to do.
The next staff meeting scheduled with the utility team and city is December twentieth. However, I've become aware of some plan-time law for several people who would be in attendance, so I would anticipate that meeting is going to be rescheduled to January.
Okay, okay, so, what I'm gonna do with this, this time, is I'm not, nothing tonight officially, but I would like to sit and talk with you guys about what you want to do back there, so we get a plan and a timeframe of when to get this done, and in what manner, is it privately owned, is it an alley, what do we do? Okay, can we do that? You open for that? Yep, go ahead.
I have one more question. When you refer to ripping it up, what, what vision do you have of ripping that up?
So, as Todd Fisher explained last time, the sewer department head, they're going to be, and he, he's not here to reiterate where, but they're going to be putting new pipes under the ground back in there. And his statement in here was that, right in that area where the gravel is now, they might tear some, they will tear some of that out to put some new pipes in the ground. So, I'm just stating, I don't see value in paving it, ripping it out, and paving it again. And what we're trying to do is get a timeframe, that's why I asked that question, when are they going to do that work? So we, so I can tell you what to expect, and we can get a calendar set up to get all of this done, the utility work, and then to help you guys out back there. Okay?
I do have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
And maybe this is where you're getting all your questions from. So, if it's a private drive, then we do not, as a city, maintain that? We do not follow it, we do not do anything, correct?
See, that would be correct if it was privately owned, and that's why we need to talk this through. What's the best option to do this?
What about an alley?
That's, that's why I brought that up.
So, that would be a city-owned, that city would retain ownership and therefore responsibility.
Okay, and then obviously, if it was a street. Obviously, you know, three ways to, you know, to have this fixed, but it's, if it's a private drive and it's paid for by private citizens, then they would just have to pay to have it redone after it's repaved, is that correct?
The city may incur liability if it is only being torn up because of a project that the city is performing, then the city may be responsible for repaving it afterwards.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, therefore, those points, Karen, great question, are exactly why I want to talk through what it means to you guys, if this is a private drive, if it's an alley and so forth. And then, it gets to whether you are maintaining it, the city is, and so forth. That's why we need to talk this through, so that when we advance this and get it paved back there, we, we're done talking about this, and you guys could just move on. Okay, so, any other questions? All right, thanks for coming in tonight, and I will, I'll be in touch with both of your families to set up a sit-down to figure out how we move forward and when it'll get done. And if we need to, I'll bring the utility department head to map out exactly what they're gonna do for you. Okay, thanks, guys.
I said no more questions, I do have one more.
Okay.
I understood originally that the plan was, when you finished paving Cedar Street in front of the dental clinic, my house, out to Forest Street, that you were gonna reroute the storm sewer down there to Forest Street. I'm unclear about what you just got through discussing. You're talking about still routing the storm sewer through all of everybody's backyard.
So, I'm not gonna elaborate, because I don't have Todd Fisher here. It's nothing different than what he said at the last meeting. And he articulated for you guys exactly why, in his opinion, not to do this, because it would end up being paved twice, because they had some work to do back there. I'll get him to call you and explain to you. It'll be what he said last time, but that's fine, that's fine. And if, same with your household, if you want to talk to them on exactly what they need to do back there, and then timeframe is not established, that's coming in the next couple of meetings with them, when this will get done, and then we can plan this and we, and move forward with it. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks, everyone. Okay, next on the agenda is the 2024 Shared Ride Taxi Operating Contract. Mr. Joyce, are you handling that one?
I can.
Okay.
All right, so, this is part of the formal process of having the shared ride taxi. We currently utilize running. This was part of a five-year grant, and 2024 is actually the fifth year of this, of the, of this grant that we receive. In 2024, we're gonna have to start the new request for, proposal for taxi service. That's just kind of background information, it doesn't affect this actual contract for 2024. So, this is just for the service being operated in the community next, next year. So, the contract is in your packet. And I'll be pulling it up here as well. If you have any questions in the meantime, I would be happy to try to answer those for you. I will say that Justin Ryan from the taxi company will be here next month to kind of talk about the service and the things that they are experiencing as well, so.
I do have a question. Aaron, the, toward the end of the contract, it states the maximum amount of hours and all that information there, is that the same as prior year?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask something similar, Mr. Joyce, if the, the language in this contract has not changed over that course of the five-year tenure that we've had with them? Is that, am I correct in assuming that, that this is the same language that year after year we've approved? Correct. Thank you. Yeah, really, the only thing that has changed is, of course, the date, the timeframe, and also on the second page there, that second-to-last paragraph, "The maximum amount of funding for this contract shall be three hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven oh one eighty-six, based on ten thousand two hundred and thirteen hours of service at a rate of thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents per hour." Really, that's the only element that has changed. That thirty-five twenty-two is based on comparables of other communities similar to Richland Center. And I would make the assumption that that thirty-five twenty-two is higher than it was in the previous year and/or years? It is. Do you know how much? I don't. That's okay. I ask a lot. Yeah, thank you.
So, let me just clarify, so the number of hours, you've got ten thousand two hundred and thirteen, that is the same?
It is the same.
That is the same.
How's the taxi doing there?
I haven't needed it, so.
How's the taxi doing, Tom?
I get two complaints a year, I don't get many.
Then I must have got those two complaints too. Or, I don't get any good feedback, I hear negative feedback on the taxi. But then we have some issues with sick times and other stuff, and...
There was no short staffing.
Staffing?
But that's not our problem.
No.
But we're still, we still, this is the only, only service we have, is that correct? There's no other options?
There's nothing. There's another taxi.
There's another taxi service in town.
I'm starting there. No, I'm just, I'm thankful, I'm thankful I don't have to use it. I mean, if you go to Walmart and you look at people waiting in the lobby for a pickup, they usually are talking very loudly on the phone to the taxi service, so.
And they're sitting there when you go in, and they're still sitting there when you go out?
And then you drive four hours and come back, and they're still sitting there waiting for their ride. So, I don't know, I don't know if there's any other options, so this is the only option that you have, that's what I was asking.
Remember that bus service, that bus service?
You remember that?
That was one reason.
Yeah, honestly, I don't get a lot of complaints on it, right? Never have.
I'll send the complaints your way.
That's fine, do that, because I really don't hear about this, so, it's fine if it's going on, I'd like to hear it.
Did a couple people show up here to complain at one of the meetings?
There was a gentleman, he's one of the drivers.
Oh, look, somebody remembers out of the audience.
One of the drivers asked about hours and how they, we could maybe change the hours so that people that were, having to be to work at early hours.
That was a driver that wanted to extend Saturday night hours, Saturday evening hours later at night.
Is there anything we can help to make it better, this is my question?
And maybe some of that, maybe some of that gets resolved with, if it was a staffing issue. And again, I'm, that, I think that's a little bit pre-my time on this. But if it was a staffing issue and you're able to staff better, then maybe those, that, the number of those complaints maybe go down? I, I'm not sure, Ryan. I don't know, Aaron, do you have any input on that? Have you heard, again, same thing, is it still kind of a staffing thing? Are they running low on staffing, or? Yeah, that, that has been the biggest concern that they have had being able to provide the level of service. They did have, the most recent issue within the last couple of weeks was one of their drivers was out for a medical issue, which impacted their service in the middle of the day. You may have heard announcements on that at that time. I, I don't know where that stands right now, but, yeah, that was something that they were kind of asking riders to, for patience and flexibility, and, but, you know, not, not everything is as flexible, obviously, as what, what they hoped, but, yeah, the staffing has been the biggest challenge, I think, of the, of the taxi service. And Justin, as I mentioned, will be here next month, so these questions might be better suited for him.
Did they mind wrong, or are they the ones that headed mechanical issues with one of their vans?
Yes.
So, they live down one?
Yes.
Current, I've got it to be part of the problem as well.
Well, and you also have the situation of, if you know that you have to go to a doctor's appointment at ten o'clock, don't call the taxi service at nine forty-five and say, "I need to go to the doctor at ten o'clock." Call ahead of time, because there could be five other people that have already called the taxi ahead of time and said, "I need picked up between nine-thirty and nine-forty-five." You are now at the back of the line. I used that taxi service for many years while my dad was alive. I never had an issue, because I always called ahead and said, "This is the time that he needs picked up, this is where we're going. This is the time he needs picked back up, this is where we're going." So, me personally, I've never had any issue with them. But again, I think you can't wait until, there are circumstances where, yeah, you have to call last minute, but if you know ahead of time when you're gonna need to use the taxi service, just call them ahead of time, get in the queue, so that the drivers know ahead of time who they're picking up, when and where, and that might alleviate it too.
Further questions or comments? Okay, so we'll have Mr. Running in January, he's coming to that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, did you ask him anything?
Nope.
I put you in.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we need, is there a reason this needs to be approved before Mr. Running's here?
We need to give this contract to the state.
That's what I thought, okay. Okay, let's see. Entertain a motion to approve the 2024 Shared Ride Taxi Operating Contract.
I'll make that motion.
You have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
So Mr. Downs, okay, we have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Okay, Erin, now let's have a roll call, Erin.
All the person, Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, item nine, election workers for the 2425 election cycle. I assume that's you, Erin.
I'll take this too. As part of the process, the election workers are recommended by the political parties and approved then by the various community boards throughout the state. This is something that the parties are responsible for getting to us by November 30th. In your packet, you can see that one of the parties has submitted their list only. And those are the individuals that are before you see.
Okay, Mr. Joyce, what action do you need tonight?
Just approval of the list of poll workers.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the list of election workers as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, any further discussion?
Quick question, Erin. Obviously, as we're looking at this list, it's a single party that submitted. Did anyone reach out to the other party and see if they had?
It's the party's responsibility.
They have to.
Correct.
And then that deadline date was what?
November 30th.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Coincidentally, two years ago during the cycle, neither party submitted their list, so.
One last question. This is for, is this for all of, all of the elections that would happen throughout the 2425?
Correct.
Years?
Yep.
So that's about how many? Is that every April? Will we have what, two, two April elections and a November election at least?
Right. I mean, you're looking at, at maximum eight total elections, probably not that many in the two-year period, but.
And my guess would be that the, the November 24 election is going to be the one that would have, that would require probably the most people to help out with, with running that, running the polls and whatnot?
I would assume so, yes.
I would assume as well, okay. Is 19 enough?
We have others that are unaffiliated.
Okay.
That are trained and have worked before. So this, the list before you, Erin, is not the only list of folks who we consider are poll workers.
Okay.
These are just the ones that will be affiliated.
Typically, what's our numbers for poll workers on a, on a given presidential election cycle? If you had to give me a rough guess?
Probably 20.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, Erin, let's have a roll call.
All the person, Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 11, Plan Commission Recommendations in Action. Item 11, Consider the Request for Land Division at 26425 U.S. Highway 14 East. That is the property known to many as the co-tractor property, now the property of the Richland Hospital. They came to the Plan Commission and asked for a land split to create a separate, a second parcel essentially in the area where the two co-b buildings had stood. The Plan Commission and RTZ Board heard that and recommended this for approval to the council. It's in your packet if you want to read through it. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the land division at 26425 U.S. Highway 14 East. Yep. So, yeah, Mark's looking at the map in your packet and he was asking if that entire parcel was one. It was, and you see this versus lot one? That's being created as its own parcel now.
Thank you.
For potential development in the future, and at this point, there's no timelines for the hospital, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Further questions or comments? Entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I think Mr. Melby won that one, but I don't know. All right. And the motion and the second, for any discussion, further discussion of the land division at 26425 U.S. Highway 14 East. Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
All the person, Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 12, Consider the Request of Land Division on Tax Parcel 276-1712-1000 at 1,000 U.S. Highway 14 West. This is East Hall, a campus property building near the, on the American agent. And, and what came up again, Plan Commission and recommended this for approval, but in discussion, there's the high school is in close proximity to the American agent, and now this East Hall is, is part of the school district. And conversation questions went with Wisconsin law. The Legion at times has rifles on hand, they fire them and test them on back. And so the question was, could this be approved? And Mr. Wendell, what did you find on this?
Yes.
Yep, and basically, there's an existing agreement already in place between the school district and the Legion, and that's why this can be done.
Yes, there is an exemption to the, the statute forbidding the possession of firearms within a certain distance. That is key to the school and the possessor having some kind of arrangement. Our understanding is that that arrangement exists, is accepted by the parties, and therefore there is no objection to this.
Okay. Therefore, with no objection, I'll entertain the motion to approve the land division on Tax Parcel 276-1712-1000 at 1,000 U.S. Highway 14 West.
So.
We have the motion, is that Mr. Melby? We have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll.
All the person, Happen John? Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers? Upstate. Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item 30, Finance Committee Recommendations in Action. Melanie, are you handling that? Okay, I'll hold you.
Thank you. All right. Item 13, Simons Deficiency Appropriation Request. So it had been brought forward a while ago, that there were two years that Simons was deficient, and per our current agreement between the city and the county, the city is to pay more 50% of that deficiency. However, it was determined that the city had made an overpayment to the county in regards to economic development after the economic development had switched over to the city. So we have applied that deficiency or that overpayment towards the deficiency, leaving us with a deficiency balance of $27,747.47 that is still owed to the county. So my motion is to authorize payment of the remaining balance of the 2020 to 2022 Simons deficiency in the amount of $27,747.47 coming out of unallocated contingency funds.
Mr. Joyce, did you get that? I can wait.
I did. That's a motion.
Oh, and, sorry, at Finance, we, I would also like to add to that motion that we would like, with that deficiency payment made, an ask that we reconvene the ad hoc committee between the city and county to reformulate our agreement.
Okay, I'll wait for you, Erin. Ashley, was that the point you were trying, did you, okay. Okay?
Got it.
Okay, we have the motion, is there a second?
I'll second this.
Second by Ms. Tepley was, okay, all right.
That clarification is, I couldn't get.
Okay, I've got it. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
All the person, Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Item 14, Consider Request from Simons Recreation Complex to Purchase a New Pool Vacuum. Tracy, I don't know if you want to speak on that, or otherwise I can just give a little synopsis and if anybody has any questions of you?
Let's do that.
Let's do that then. All right, so Simons has a pool vacuum that they have, they have tried to maintain it for as long as they can, and it is, it is, no pun intended, dead in the water. So now it needs to be replaced. I thought Todd would appreciate that. So this was brought before the Simons Aditorium Committee at the end of the summer, which we approved it. Tracy was trying to get as much life out of the old pool vacuum as she could, plus kind of see where her budget would be falling by the end of the year. So she did get bids for the new vacuum and does have funds in her maintenance or repair line item. So my motion would be to approve the purchase of a new pool vacuum from Midwest Pool Supply for a cost of $2,500 out of Simons Maintenance and Repair Line Item.
Okay, with the motion from is Walters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers, Mr. Joyce, are you still typing?
No.
Okay, any further discussion on the new pool vacuum purchase? I have one question, Tracy, do we know timeframes to get it installed, get it done?
I'm still waiting approval from the county, so as soon as I get that from the county, they're waiting for yours' approval, I guess, from my understanding. And so I'm hoping to tell them tomorrow that you guys approved it, they'll say yes. I'll tell Midwest Pool, and then they deliver chemicals, I think, next week, so I anticipate I'd have it next week.
All right.
Thank you. Any other, well, she's holding that microphone, any questions?
How long have I had the current one?
Oh, gosh.
Do you remember?
Oh, it's been there, oh my gosh, I don't remember how long, but it's probably 2010, 2012, long time.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
All the person, McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 15, Consider Request from Simons Recreation Complex to Purchase Two New On-Demand Water Heaters. Simons currently has two on-demand water heaters. One of them is no longer functioning. To just replace the, the board of it is $2,500 plus an additional installation cost. So it's been deemed that these water heaters are at end of life. Tracy received bids. Lowest bid was from Geolynix Heating for $5,700. This again went to the Simons Aditorium Committee where we approved it. So my motion would be to approve the bid for two on-demand water heaters from Geolynix Heating for $5,700, which will come out of the Simons Maintenance and Repair Line Item.
Okay, we have the motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I think I definitely got that, that is kind of second, there's no question on this. Okay, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Joyce, we'll need a roll call, go.
All the person, Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda then, Personnel and Insurance Committee Recommendations in Action. Again, Melanie Wolf.
Okay, so at the Personnel Committee, it was brought to our attention that when we had done the Personnel Policy, talking about employees receiving compensation for holiday pay, we just put that it was going to be their regular schedule. Well, we have some employees that they might work for nine hours and then a half day, so they weren't being paid, if I remember correctly, they were being paid for eight hours when perhaps that day they didn't work a full eight hours because they had worked the majority of their schedule earlier in the week. So what we had talked about is amending. I don't want to see it in here, Ashley. Amending at. I don't see the new one in here. The only one that's uploaded is the new version. Okay. It's just the first sentence. That they will be compensated at their regular rate of pay as determined by, there it is, by their individual employee's, employee's schedule. So if an employee works, say, four nines and then four hours on Friday, and Friday is a holiday, they're only going to get paid for four hours because that's their regular schedule, where you may have another employee that works five, eight-hour shifts. So on that holiday, they would get paid eight hours. So that makes sure that nobody gets overpaid or shorted for their holiday time. So the motion would be to amend the employee handbook, Personal Policy 206 Holidays, to change the wording that full-time employees shall receive their normal compensation at the employee's regular rate of pay as determined by the individual employee's regular schedule for the holidays listed within the Personnel Policy.
Okay, we've got the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Melby, is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
All the person, Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Happen John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Public Safety Committee Recommendations in Actions, Action, Mr. Kevin Melby.
Number 17, the 2024 Municipal Taxi Licenses, as you can see, there's two of them included in here, Town Taxi and one that was discussed briefly earlier, the Running Taxi License. If you want to look at it, has their employees listed, so according to this, they have five employees, so hopefully that'll help out with the personnel issues that have been discussed earlier. I will make a motion to approve the 2024 Municipal Taxi Licenses.
Motion, Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Okay, we don't need a roll call for that. All in favor of approving those licenses, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion is carried.
All right. Item 18, Class B Picnic License for Richland County Performing Arts Home. All right, item 18, Class B Picnic License for Richland County Performing Arts Council for December 16th, 2023. A swing into Christmas holiday jazz show. I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion for Mr. Melby. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Downs won that one. Okay, is there discussion? All in favor of approving the picnic license, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion is carried. Next, appointments to committees, commissions, boards, confirm appointments I have none tonight. And next on the agenda, public comment. I've not been made aware of anyone who would like to address the council. Is there anyone who would like to do so? Sharon, you got anything tonight?
Merry Christmas and thanks for your service.
Thank you, Sharon. This concludes public comment. Mr. Perry? Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, next, closed session, item 19, Chair May Entertain Motion to Enter Into Closed Session Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85-1G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The purpose is to discuss ongoing litigation and request for expenditure on an expert witness. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of going into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. We are now in closed session.